Hey, my clock just turned four thirty and I see that we have a quorum of the city council present. So I'm gonna call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First on our agenda this afternoon is approval of our consent agenda. We have vouchers totaling one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars, forty-one cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers?
Yes.
Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Our second item is minutes from our November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I so move.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Byes seconds. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll now move into our first public comment opportunity. And I know we have people that are here on the agenda, but we also have Ronald's here and Jane's here. Is there any? Members of the public that would like to address the council? Nobody online. So we will close the first public comment opportunity. And we'll move into agenda item D, and we have Byron Adrian and his team for Midnight Housing. So Mr. Styles, if you'd like to introduce our guest.
Yeah, well, I don't, I'll let them introduce themselves, but we've been talking with Midnight Housing, a little bit about housing projects. Of course, that's one of our strategic priorities. So I reached out to Byron and his team. Very familiar with the organization, was on their board for a while, worked with them at Wichita State. So I'm pretty confident in their product and in kind of how they do business. So I think they'd be a good partner with us. And so we began talking about potential sites and what the city needed. Workforce housing is sort of where, where we have the biggest need currently. We also have a need in seniors, but I think workforce would probably be the first place to try to attack. So asked Byron to take a look at it and they've kind of come back with a proposal and I would defer to him and however else you guys want to handle that conversation and go from there.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and.
If you'd stand, stand behind the podium there, we'd appreciate that.
I can move myself.
That, that way we'll get, get you on camera.
Okay. Thank you for having us here today. As Matt said, we've been talking for a little while here about a potential housing opportunity here in Hillsborough. So I'm Byron Adrian, president, Midnight Housing. And Corey Bannister is in our property maintenance and construction area. Angie Mendoza, finance director, and Doug Burgum, construction director. So we have been looking at a potential project here for city of Hillsborough and in your packet, I think you probably have some information about a project that, that we're interested in submitting a tax credit application for. And Midnight Housing has been involved in development of tax credit properties for over thirty years. There's a list of some of our past properties that are in the packet. And we have done either senior projects over the years or non-senior. And in talking to Matt, as he had indicated earlier, it looks like what your need is currently probably more on the non-senior general occupancy as opposed to just a strict senior project. So we've talked through that and looked at what might be possible. And so there's a summary that's in your packet. I'll just briefly go through this. A project that we would propose calling Hillcrest Grove. We're looking at a possible twenty-four unit tax credit project that would be made up of twelve duplex buildings, would include a clubhouse, maintenance garage. Duplexes would be two and three bedroom units, each with a garage. Units in order to fit within the requirements of this program. And the program is through Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. They have an annual application period where developers across the state make applications for allocation of tax credits. And if awarded and construction is completed, then it needs to be the requirement, it needs to be in a very energy efficient manner. And so that's one of the benefits of projects in this program is that they're very energy efficient. You can see there that the appliances that would be included in the units would be refrigerator, range, space saver microwave, dishwasher, washer dryer, furnace and tankless hot water heater would be gas. Air conditioner appliances would be electric, residents would be responsible for all utilities except for trash. The clubhouse has a manager's office, community room, kitchen, restroom, computer room, and then there's a nice rear patio. Free Wi-Fi is available in the clubhouse. And then for a non-senior, we'd be looking at including a playground and basketball court. So we've worked with an architect so far on a potential site plan. We've looked at several of the land options that you've got in the land bank and we believe that the one there by Dollar General would probably work the best. And twenty-four unit project would probably take up maybe about half of that. I think there's about eleven acres there. And so twenty-four units would be the level that we would go in with what we would call a phase one. And depending upon what the demand could be down the road, there could be additional development on the rest of that land. When we do a tax credit development, we work with what's called a syndicator. And the syndicator has the contacts with the investor group that provides funding to take those tax credits. And then that funding is what provides the money to be able to go through and do the construction. And so when we've talked to the syndicator about doing something here in Hillsborough, they thought that something in that twenty to twenty-four unit size would work. We typically would like to go in with a little bit more because of some of the operating expenses and have everything function well. We like to go in a little bit higher than that, but we have no doubt that a twenty-four unit project could work very well here. So we've done a little bit of groundwork with them and know that that would be a possibility to move forward with an application. The requirement for applicants to be able to be actually residents and live in a tax credit property is that their income, their household income, gross household income needs to be below eighty percent of every meeting income. And then there are several categories below eighty percent that, that they can fall into also. And you can see in your package, you can see what that annual gross household income amounts would be based on the number of people that are in the household. Most of the units in the tax credit project would, most of the residents would fall in that sixty percent category, but there are some units that would be available in the thirty, fifty and eighty. And then the lower that percentage is, we're able to reduce the rents. And so that makes it very affordable for some folks that might be in the thirty percent or the fifty percent because their rents would be lower. So at each category, the rents would be different. And we have not gone through enough yet to determine what those rents would be. But we do believe from what we've looked at already that there's a very good chance that a project here of this size, twenty-four units would work well here. And in talking to Matt, it sounds like he's done some studies and it looks like there's definitely a need. You got folks that are working here that would like to live here, but just haven't been able to identify the housing options that that meet their need. There's additional information, I won't go through it, but in the packet, you got additional information, just about Midnight Housing. Been around since the seventies. And the programs that we're involved with, home repair is where we started. We also do some construction of new houses with funding that we get through the city of Wichita. We've been doing that for a couple of years. What we're talking about here is property development where we work with the Kansas Housing Resources Corp. Tax credit program, been doing that for over thirty years. And then we do manage the properties that we develop. And so that last page in the little packet that we provided shows a list, almost thirteen hundred units that we manage. Most of those are properties that we developed. But over the last several years, we started to take on some management activity for properties that are owned by others, not just Midnight Housing. Because managing tax credit properties requires a lot of compliance and it takes a little bit of an effort to stay up on all that. And so we're looking to do a little bit more, more of that. So that gives you a little bit of an idea about Midnight Housing located in Wichita. Most of what we manage, you can see there is in the Wichita area or the surrounding area. We do have a property in Coffeyville that we manage. We own another property in Leavenworth, which we have another third party organization manage. But most of what we've done is in the Wichita area. Most recently, we have been working in Valley Center. So we've done some development and that's been senior. And also senior housing in Newton that we've just, just finished. And then we've got approval, that last one on the list there for what we own, we're getting ready to start construction early next year on a senior project in Abilene. So we're starting to branch out a little bit. Hillsborough fits that. So we're starting to move north. So with that, I would, you know, open it up for a question or turn it back over to Matt or just.
That question.
Wherever you want to go.
Yeah, I have several questions. Different between senior and non-senior.
Senior is age fifty-five and older.
Like, so you're non-senior, you wouldn't, seniors could still be.
They could still, yeah. So when we say general occupancy, like we're talking here, it could be any age group. But if we come in and do a senior group, then, then they have to be over fifty-five.
What's the build difference between the senior and non-senior?
Yeah, the build difference is we typically do a slab on grade, one or one and two bedroom. That's what we're doing in, proposing to do in Abilene is same kind of thing duplex, we're doing duplex units, but they're slab on grade, one and two bedroom. The clubhouse, a little bit different, will include an exercise room and arson craft room.
So you're, this being general, you'd still do a slab?
We'd look at that, but we were definitely looking at doing basements also, like maybe on the three. So we're doing two and three bedrooms, still working through that design. And that's something that we've been talking through. Do we want to have some slab on grades? If we do a slab on grade, typically we'll have a safe room also there if it's slab on grade. And that's just where we're at right now, working through the design, working through the pro forma, looking at where would the rents be? And trying to figure, we have, we have got a very, very, very preliminary site plan that's been put together. So we're starting to try to envision just what's the design, what's the size of the duplex buildings. But right now I think we'd probably be leaning towards basements, Doug. Corey, is there any reason?
Three bedroom. For sure, we'd do a basement. We've done. You know, it's really not, I don't think cost effective to do the basement under the two bedroom.
Okay.
And we, like Byron said, have done the safe rooms whenever we don't have a basement. And that's pretty cost effective doing it that way.
And I think what's nice about this eleven acres is that it allows us space to go a couple of different ways in terms of the size of that duplex, whether we want to keep a slab on grade or do the basement typically. Even, even like we've done a forty unit project before on about seven acres to get forty units on seven acres. And then they weren't bunched together. There was, there was good green space there. So we, we could envision two twenty-four unit phases here on, on eleven acres, I think, pretty, pretty easily. And then we've got, we still have a little flexibility to put in the kind of design that works for.
So is that the only piece of property that you guys are looking at or is there others? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, we did look at the one that's right next to the car dealership there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, you know, felt like the fact that the street there wasn't paved. We would definitely want to have a paved street to access that. And it just felt like the one there by Dollar General was looking perfect. But those would be the two that we looked at.
What would be a timeline? I know there's approval process and stuff, but what would be a typical timeline?
Yeah, the timeline would be that there's a preliminary application that's due January five, twenty twenty-four. So that's coming up on us. And then there, if, if we're invited to submit a full application, which we'll find out within about a month after that. So probably about around the end of January we find out. Then we have a full application that's due, the first part, I think is May ten. So we were, and so between that, between the preliminary application and full application, we'll request a full market study. I know you guys have had like a hat done, assessment study done. This would be a little bit more information. That's what the underwriters are going to require to get full market study done. So we do that prior to submitting the full. And we do that in May and then middle of July is when the awards are announced. So if we're successful and have an approved award, then it would be probably early twenty twenty-five before we'd be ready to start construction. And then fall winter timeframe of twenty twenty-five, we'd be able to have some of those first units available to start moving some folks into. We don't need to wait until all the duplexes are completed. We typically move folks in kind of on a, on a as, as the buildings are completed.
And your markets, your market study is looking at need as well as income levels? Is that?
Yes, exactly. Demographics of population and it'll go out at least, I'd say at least, you know, they'll look at a primary, which is pretty close in here. Hillsborough will also go out countywide, look at what other rural opportunities there are, what the vacancies are, occupancy is. And, and then based on the population size. And then what, what we look at then is, is a capture rate. And that's the critical thing is what percentage of the population needs to be captured in order to fill this unit? And so the lower that capture rate is, you know, the better, the better it looks and the better, the better everybody is. And the lower it is, even we might even start putting in a request to maybe bump up the number of units a little bit if, if we feel like there's enough demand. So we've got a couple of months here that we work through that and we can make some adjustments and some tweaks. You know, the application that goes in in February is a preliminary. And then the full in May. And so this is a competitive process. There's developers across the state. They're going to be putting the applications in. And so there's a scoring criteria that KHRC has issued. And in order for the application to really score well and be competitive with the other applications, things like, you know, a land donation, if that was a possibility, that really helps the application. And, and then the fee waivers from, from the city, if there's fee waivers for this size of a project, anything thirty units or less, if there's at least forty thousand dollars of documented fee waivers, then that also helps the application. So those, those are a couple of things right there that really help make that application look, look really good.
So that's how we as a city help.
Thank you. Yes.
Nice segue, yeah. Uh, we've got an option agreement that we're looking at and Andrew's got it, got it right now. We're kind of working through that and hopefully have that for the next meeting. They need it by January.
Yeah, it just needs to go in with the preliminary application. So if we get that by the end of the month, then we're in good shape. And I would say right now, what we, what we want to do is to come together in terms of just how much of that land do we feel like we need to include in this twenty-four unit or phase one? And then if, like we had talked, not surprised to you, but if we could have the opportunity like a first, write a first refusal on the remainder of that eleven acres to hold that for a future phase, we'd love to have that too. If that works in the city's plan to pretty much designate that whole eleven acres for this kind of a development activity. If that works, great. But we're really looking for that option contract to just handle that portion that we'd be looking for this initial preliminary.
You have to go back through the process if you wanted to do the phase.
Yeah, we do.
No way to do that all up front?
That's a great idea. A lot better. No, and even that's great. I'm glad you brought that up because when I talked about the land donation and the, and the fee waivers, that's by phase. So it's important for you to know that when we talk about that forty thousand, that only applies to this first phase. And then if we all, all want to move forward with another phase, it's another, and, and KHRC has the opportunity to change the rules every year and they tend to do that. So if they don't change it, then we're looking at another forty thousand, another land donation, and they could go up, they could go down.
As far as the, the fees, we have a standing policy on, that you guys approved last year or the year before, on residential units where we weigh building fees and connection fees. So twenty-four units, I think we'd be pretty easy to get to that, that amount. When you start looking at tap fees and all the other things attached to that. And that's already policy. So it's not really like we need to do anything extra at that point, but the land donation would be the big part of that. And so we have to weigh out whether it's more important for us to have twenty-four units of housing or own eleven acres of property that we haven't developed. In my opinion, the housing is probably more important. That, you know, of course is a decision for you guys.
Is there a zoning thing to go through?
Yeah, we'll have to go through some zoning stuff through this. We may actually end up having to replat this and trying to avoid that if possible because that's a little bit of a process. But we would have to vacate the road and kind of rework some of those things. There'd be some zoning stuff to do there too. The zoning right now is CS. So we need to go to an R, probably an R two, maybe an R three. We might want to do R three just in case. There's a little bit of process with that. I wouldn't anticipate that being super controversial.
We don't have to do that before the January.
No, uh-uh, no, we wouldn't have to do any of that until we got approval and we're moving forward. So if, if not, if it doesn't get selected and there's no harm, no foul, everything kind of goes away, we're still farming that property. So.
In terms of the phasing Byron, the, you don't mix, mix projects, like you wouldn't have phase two be a senior project.
We could, okay, that's possible. Okay. Yep, that's possible.
Another option, if, if we find a lot of people are over income, we could do a more income housing project over there. If the community, we find that people are over qualified income wise, that would be an option over there. And I think the market study will help us, you know, with that.
Sure. Yeah, we're looking at other opportunities that might make the.
Well, I think, I think you'll find that we're very excited about this opportunity. And we will, I think you'll find us to be very cooperative in terms of how we will want to work with you and, and because we look at this, or I do anyway, as a godsend, you know? So our community is something that our community desperately needs. And, you know, it's just, we've had a lot of, a lot of those godsons over the last few years and I just see this as one more. So very thankful, very thankful, yeah.
Look forward to working with you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks Byron. Thank you guys for coming. Appreciate it.
Ron, I've got a question.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I was wondering in terms of, I guess accessibility in your housing, like if someone had a, some disabilities, would you have, I guess, would it probably be more your senior housing that will have like, you know, rings or rails or anything like that within the housing for those that wouldn't be able to, you know?
The units are constructed accessible. They need to meet accessibility guidelines. And then we're required to keep a certain percentage, five percent for folks that are, you know, like disability in wheelchair, that kind of thing. And so typically we have two units that would fall within that category. And then we have to have one unit that is like for hearing impaired.
Okay.
But we have like mobility impaired, couple of units for that. And then hearing impaired, but like I said, they're all, you know, built accessible where they can make some of those new questions.
Just so you know, when we build a senior project, it's literally completely accessible. There's no units that have steps. There's no curb stops in the garages and stuff like that. They're
Okay, yeah.
Very accommodating.
Okay, I just didn't know. Cause if there was, I guess, limited to more of the senior projects, if there was a younger individual who also had disabilities, if they would qualify for that housing, but if, you know, if you ought to have some allocated, then.
All of our multifamily are also accessible, visitable with a certain percentage of ADA.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So next meeting, we will have an option agreement, hopefully before you have and we can talk some more about the specifics. Let's see, questions now? Happy to answer anything.
You're talking about option on the land?
On the land, yeah, yeah. That's kind of the first step and then we'll get into the application process and as Byron said, it'll be sometime in the middle of the summer when we have a, an idea if it gets approved or not, and then we can move forward from there.
That's great. Thank you guys. Travel safe. Okay, next up is we have an annual department head report and we have Chief Ben Steckety of the Hillsborough Fire Department and also our building inspection and code enforcement officer. Chief Steckety.
Greetings, everyone. I'm going to hand out these. This is the statistical information about all the runs and drills, the firefighters that attended those runs and drills. As you look at the spreadsheet, excuse me, sorry.
Yeah.
Where there's a one indicated on the runs, that means that firefighter attended that run. There's also ones indicated on the drills, but you'll see some of them have a two indicated on the drills. And that's the firefighter or the fire officer that organized that drill. You know, I encourage other firefighters to go ahead and, and organize the drills. In fact, even tonight, we're having a fire drill. And Matt Heine has organized our fire drill for tonight. So, so that's basically what you have there in front of you. You can peruse that. And also Matt has them electronically. If you'd like to have them sent to you electronically, we can certainly do that. And for anyone else that's centering. So basically what I have is a PowerPoint presentation for you and Matt's going to pull that up.
Yeah, we're going to try.
If we can make it work.
I'm worried about your attendance, Ben.
So yes, I'm going to try to work on that.
I love how many of these are Tabor.
That's probably our most.
As a, as a Tabor grant, I.
That's probably our most common run, you know, but we treat each one like it's an emergency. And I always, I speak with the students and I make sure that they treat them like emergencies.
Yep.
Because we have had fires on Tabor campus. You know, so we, we, and you know, it's, it's, it's a good training opportunity. It's just a good, good exercise and this is the way we do it.
Absolutely. There's the DMC.
There it is.
So I'm going to begin with the building department report. This year we've issued seventy-four permits compared to last year where we issued a hundred and seven permits. All of those seventy-four, only two were commercial new construction. One is Mr. Drigger's project picture here.
We may have to turn it on.
Oh yeah, I gotta turn it on. These new fangled contraptions.
It was working a second ago. That's just not right.
Do you need to point it towards so that this can reach the dome?
That'll disconnect this from the thing. I can run it from here. People would like me to and just tell me when.
Okay, it's going to go pretty rapid fire. There's a lot of slides. The other new construction commercial is Mini Warehouse, which only has the foundation completed. Next, there were two residential new construction projects. Both were accessory structures. Here we have Jerry Fenske's new shed. And then we have Tom Richards' new garage. There were plenty of remodels, reroofs, demolitions, other projects for a total value of one million, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars, which brought in fees of nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars. And here we have the latest concept of the project that we've been working on for a long time. This, along with the complete set of professionally designed plans are what the builder of the container homes is proposing to present at the next planning commission meeting.
That's next week.
So, and then earnings certificates of occupancy were a couple of large projects that were permitted last year. The MB Foundation addition and parking lot. And Tabor College's Jost Hall. I would note that I also perform all of the state fire marshal required annual inspections on Tabor campus. Any questions before I move on to the fire department portion? Okay, sometimes we're asked to use our resources in ways that reflect our dedication to others in the fire service. And we're honored to do that. And we're honored to do that. The flag that you see uh was donated to the Hillsborough Fire Department by Auto House Towing. So the rest of these slides will show you some examples of how your fire department is trained this year. There, he were at the. Co-op elevator and bunker tour, so the co-op invited us to their facilities and fed us pizza. So here we are at the top of the elevator, um and they're at the head house being, you know, instructed by Joe of the of the co-op of. Of the operations. And then from the elevator, we went to the bunker on Kansas. Um we learned about the hazards underneath. And above. And you can see that it was mostly empty during our visit there. And this was a, this was one of, that was our our evening drills, you know, that's uh. Just, you know, on our, we meet on the first and third Wednesday of the month, and these are just our regular evening drills. And, you know, we have a photographer that that comes most of the time, so you're getting. Snapshots of the ones where we have our photographer. Okay, so next, um uh this is the first of three training events. Uh on Tabor's campus, here we're setting up for non-destructive training in the M J R building. Here we see a couple of firefighters establishing water supply. And connecting to the apparatus. And the next one is the the first team getting ready to go in. There's another shot of them. And, you know, the chief always has to keep an eye on everything. So here are the things that were taught this, at at this drill were um water supply, obviously, and then the pump operations. There's a team. Doing uh search and rescue, there's a team doing fire suppression, uh there's a team doing hose management. And the and the team doing the pump operations, and so each one then would rotate. As we go through the evolutions, and so everyone got a chance to do all of the functions. And then afterwards, we talk about what we did right and what we could do better. We call that an after action review. And uh Mason usually takes the lead on these events, and we are so fortunate to have him. So then we had another night where we did electrical vehicle awareness changes in transportation mean changes in firefighting and rescue tactics. Uh keeping up with these changes is important. So Hillsborough Ford let Merlin show us the safety concern and cut points on the Mach E, but they would not let us cut it. And then also, uh my son brought his electric vehicle. So we can look that over.
Also didn't cut that one, did you?
He asked me not to, I liked it. And then here we have uh Captain Matt Heine, he's demonstrating some of the tools that he was instrumental in uh getting. For all of the rescue trucks in Marion County. And he worked closely with the Marion County Fire Chiefs Association to get that done. And the equipment was funded by the Marion County Rescue Budget. And which we're gonna be training with some of that equipment tonight. Uh this is the second event on the Tabor campus, we invited uh uh law enforcement and EMS to come and tour. Uh the new Jost Hall before it was occupied. And here I'm going over where the location and the procedures for shutting off the gas and electricity to the building. And then after we toured the whole building, we ended up inside the storm shelter. Um this is a uh ICC five hundred rated storm shelter, very robust. And uh the radio signal in here is good, because uh part of the requirement for construction. Is a bidirectional antenna installed. And here we're very, very happy to get our uh heavy brush truck. Um and Captain Heine is was instrumental in getting that truck as well, and here he's. Going over the operation with firefighter Boddington. This is another one of our evening drills. He Matt, in fact, wrote the specs for this truck, and here you're seeing the the side spray function. And you can see that is a very robust truck. It's a, it's a, it's a off-road vehicle. That carries fifteen hundred gallons of water, so it has to be mighty powerful. So here we are at the third Tabor building that we were allowed to use for training. This training will be destructive. And this training marks a departure for me, because I was never comfortable doing live fire training within the city limits. Um you know, you have the risk of fire spreading to unintended structures, equipment failure, all kinds of things can go wrong. But um. Due to the location, the construction, the skill of the instructors. And the fact that we weren't going to let it burn. I decided that the risks were worth the benefit of this training, so we went ahead with it. We used all of our structural apparatus. So the ladder truck is, we're gonna pre-connect it to a hydrant for redundant water supply and a backup pumper. Our primary water supply will be a static source, uh as most of our fires take place in the country. Plus, any hose lay would block, would have blocked B Street. It takes a lot of gray hair to pull off in a net. Thankfully, we have a good number of young people too. So this is that static water source I'm talking about, it's a, it's a our drop tank. And it folds up and we carry it on our, on our tanker, and then we unfold it and then we empty the tanker into it. And then what would typically happen is then the the tanker would then skedaddle and go get more water to refill it as the water in from that tank is being used. So that's what I mean by a static water source. And then we use that hard suction hose, which we keep on onboard the engine to draw that water from that source. Into the pump. So the red shirt, the guy in the red shirt is Billy Hendricks. He has joined the fire department this past year. In front of him is Brendan Schaefer, who is a prospective member. He'll qualify to join F um after the first of the year. So the young man in the blue shirt without a cap is Connor Hebert, who joined this year. Next to him in the other blue shirt is Nathan Lopez, who also joined this past year. So this past year, we've gained three new firefighters.
Awesome.
Yes. So this is our go no-go meeting. You know, um we take this training very seriously, and so we have, that we're all, all the officers are meeting. And the, an individual you can't see is Rick Unruh, who is Corey Unruh's father, he used to be the chief in McPherson. Very intelligent and very good uh instructor, so we had, we use him as a resource here as well. And then before we get started, everyone gets safety instructions. So here's team one getting geared up to go. You know, Mason's willingness to share his uh skills has raised the competence level of the entire fire department. We're really blessed to have him. So here is firefighter Trent Jones helping Connor Hebert and Nathan Lopez with their gear checks. This is an important part of firefighting. You know, you check each other, you make sure that your P P E is one hundred percent. Nothing left undone. So here Cory and Mason will be our inside instructors. And here's uh, you know, chief's gotta give a little pep talk, and here's what I tell the new firefighters. We are not heroes. Not like you would, not like on the movies and TV, we are just people doing a job. And this training is how we learn to do that job correctly and safely. My main objective is not to get that fire out, it's to make sure all these firefighters go home. Put that on there. Here Assistant Chief Helmer, uh he's uh inside, so he's one of three officers. Inside to guide and protect the student firefighters. And here we have ignition. And here we have Lieutenant Merlin Font is backing up his young team members. Inside, they learn about teamwork, fire behavior, smoke development, thermal layering, flow pass. And finally, extinguishment techniques. And that was successful, so now we're getting the next team ready to go in. We're also teaching fundamentals of communication and coordination as team two gets ready to enter. That hose you see going through the window, that is the safety officer's line, so that's what Todd Helmer has. Just in case things go wrong.
He's taking that picture there. This guy.
It's Weston, cause he's got the. Okay, here Billy Hendricks uh is relating his experience. I don't know if you noticed, but a lot of the members that are in this training are our newest members. Here Jesse Dirks is helping Nathan Schaefer get ready to go in. And it's important to take breaks along the way. And Todd Helmer, he is a wealth of knowledge and experience for the new recruits, and he's always willing to share, very hardworking individual. So here's the next team ready to go in. Here Jesse Dirks is taking over inside safety. This is a great picture here that shows how the the fire, then when they they ignited, they let it develop. They let the fire actually get get going, that's where you see all that smoke coming out. And so here, these two individuals are just waiting for the fire to develop and bring in the the students. And you can see the conditions change quickly, but these guys don't panic. So from the outside, you can see the smoke conditions, and I did contact all the neighbors to let them know that we're doing this, so they wouldn't be alarmed. And here we have success, those firefighters are coming out, and you don't see that smoke anymore. And now here we're doing uh, making sure it's completely out, doing MAPPA, cause again, we're not letting it burn, and when we do this out in the country. It's oftentimes a structure that somebody wants to get rid of, so they they offer it to us to do fire training. And we do the fire training, at the end of the day, we let it burn. And so that's one of the reasons why we're making sure that this one is out, cause we're not letting this one burn. Now, everything has to get put back, so it's ready to go for the next one. Everybody participates in that, and here we do, here we go again with our after action. Uh review, you know, what went right and what can we improve? And it was a long, hard day, but totally worth it. So we recognize that without the support of the city council and the city administrator, we could not be where we are right now or in the future, so. Thank you. And uh any questions about fire training in the fire department? So um that about wraps up my report. I do wanna invite you to come a little bit early uh to the next city council meeting. And I will have the drone here and will be, I'll be able to demonstrate the functions of the drone for you. Any other, any questions, anything else?
Thank you again for last Thursday, that could have been pretty scary, so.
You know, that's uh, uh you know, I gotta tip my hat to those Atmos guys.
Yes.
They responded very, very, you know, they did what I do. When we get a a gas leak call, I check the meter first. Cause if that meter is spinning, we got big problems. If it's not, then I feel like I can take my meter. Excuse me, I can take my meter and and go in and check, but if the the meter's spinning, I'm not going in. So the the meter was spinning, and those guys put their meter inside the door, and it was at about. Okay, the lower explosive limit for natural gas is four percent. So your meter reads the lower explo- explosive limit in percentage of that limit. So if your meter reads one hundred percent, that's one hundred percent of the lower explosive limit, meaning four percent gas. That it'll ignite. They were at ninety eight percent, so it was just below the lower explosive limit at the door. So it was a very dangerous situation. So um we, the the evacuation took place, and then we, they got the gas shut off, they had the gas shut off by the time we got there. We, uh Todd Helmer disconnected the power, and it's an old house, so it's not super tight. So we just waited. And for a while, and then when when we felt that enough time had gone by, two firefighters, full gear, breathing air. Each one, we had two monitors, we have one that was donated to us by Atmos and the one that Atmos had. And I sent those firefighters in, and the highest reading they were getting was in one of the upstairs rooms at forty eight percent of the lower explosive limit. But the rest of the house is like at twelve percent, so I had, I said open windows, open doors, and and the emergency was averted. But. All right.
Well done.
Yeah, thank you. You'll have a great, yours to your day.
You wanna take that radio? Just in case.
I think we can all agree that we're very fortunate to have the quality of of emergency services in Hillsborough that we have. And that's a credit, not uh not just to all the the members, but. As I told uh Chief Steckity before the meeting, that it's a, that it's a factor of of the culture that they created. Where we have people that want to be on that, I mean, they, this is, that's a group of people that others wanna join. And to to the benefit of everybody in Hillsborough, so. Well done, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on, we have uh the business section of our meeting, and the first item there is consideration of ordinance thirteen eighty one. Which is amending ordinance thirteen seventy four, authorizing the lease purchase of for equipment. So um, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, so the issue here is we had a VIN and description number for the new fire truck that was incorrect in the original lease. Um so we have to, have to uh adopt a new ordinance uh to amend the previous ordinance, and then you also have the the amendment. Who the lease, which will change that then issue. Uh we'd gotten the original VIN number from Hayes Fire, and it turned out not to be the correct. One, there's several different options, you could gotten into that, and so that's kind of how it ended up being that it wasn't titled correctly based on what. Uh well, title was fine, but the lease wasn't reflecting what was on the title, so. Uh this corrects that and authorizes uh the mayor and city clerk to to not sign up on the amendment.
Any questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to adopt ordinance thirteen eighty one, which is amending ordinance thirteen seventy four. Authorizing lease purchase agreement for equipment and also allowing the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Make that motion.
Councilman By moves, is there a second? Councilman Lowen seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none will pull the council, Councilman By.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Councilman Driggers.
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen eighty one is hereby adopted. Next item up is consideration of adoption of the twenty twenty three C I P or capital improvement plan, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we reviewed this a couple of different times. Uh we were waiting on Darren to give us a finalized version, which we got back in the summer, and then. We got into budget time and I just kind of lost track of it a little bit, so. Uh we never officially adopted it, um cause we were waiting on those, some of those sections, uh even though we did see the streets and some of the water and sewer sections. Um the main document is a huge file, so I didn't attach it, you had to go out and download it, I hope everybody was able to at least go see it. Uh it's nothing new that you haven't seen before, it's just, uh it's a ginormous file, so. Uh what it is, you know, we've got the plan prioritized and had, I had Darren break it down into years and and kind of schedule out those things, so we got about thirteen and a half million dollars. Of improvements and maintenance in there from, from here until twenty thirty nine, or excuse me, twenty thirty six. Um obviously, this is sort of subjective, um how that gets prioritized, um. You're not at all lo- locked into these projects and how the order is set, uh you know, we've we've got this new grant that we're gonna do Adams Street. Of course, that was the top priority, so we are moving in priority, but you know, there there could be an opportunity someplace else that we we don't. Uh that shifts around, the years are, you know, completely up to budgeting uh as well, so. Uh what what we're asking for today is an adoption of the C I P, um that gives us an outline of kind of where where we're gonna go with capital improvements. It also puts us in the running for a couple of uh grant opportunities, specifically with parks and recreation stuff. Um trails more than anything, uh we have to have this kind of in place in order to make that. Make those cases, these, this is something we're gonna do, so uh there's, there's no financial. You know, financial impact at this moment is adopting it, obviously, there's thirteen and a half million dollars, if you. If you wanna find thirteen and a half million dollars in improvements tomorrow, we can start that process, but. Uh this is sort of a staggered plan, so uh we'll we'll kind of take it one day at a time on that. Um but we're just looking for adoption of the the final C I P is presented. I would also note that we are gonna do um. Since we changed staffing in the recreation, we kind of delayed the parks and recreation part of it, but we plan on doing that in uh twenty twenty four, so. Uh once we get that done, we'll just approve that and as as an amendment to the the full C I P.
Questions? Okay, hearing none, I would consider a motion to adopt the twenty twenty three capital improvement plan is submitted. Councilman Driggers moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman By seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, and we now have uh discussion items. First is statement of municipal policy. Motion carries. And we now have, uh, discussion items. First is statement of municipal policy, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So the league municipalities, uh, when Lou and I went to a couple of their meetings, they've encouraged encouraged local cities to adopt or create a statement of municipal policy. Um, that is just a way to sort of streamline the process when we interact with our legislators. The league has its own, uh, statement of municipal policy, which we've agreed to as as members of the league. Uh, it's about fifty page, or not fifty pages, but it's it's several sections. It's very long, uh, very comprehensive. But you know, those, not all of those things apply to the city of Hillsborough. Uh, and so what we did was took their advice and started kind of looking at what are the things that maybe we would want to focus on. Um, so I took the opportunity based on what is in the league's policy to develop uh, a couple of options for for us to look at as potential, uh, statement of policy. Uh, the first thing in there, and of course, all these are subject to your, your desires. If there's something in here that say, Matt, this is crazy. Why should we care about this? Or there's too many, you know, we can adjust that as as needed. Uh, the first thing in there, I think, was is kind of important just to state that we're cooperative and collaborative. Uh, I got the feeling from our last interaction that, uh, the the legislators feel that the league is antagonistic toward the legislature, which is probably true in some effect. And it's kind of hard not to when they, you know, they feel like you're threatening. And so having a baseline of statement that says, you know what, we're in this to collaborate with you and be partners and not adversaries, I think is an important thing. Um, it just sort of sets the tone that, hey, we're we're not here to, uh, to be your enemy. We're here to help work with you to find the best solution for things. Uh, one of the big things that we always see during legislative legislative session is, uh, opportunity or attempts to circumvent home rule. We've got a constitutional amendment that allows for home rule in the state. Uh, and there's always, there's always opportunities or or things that the legislature wants to preempt us on. Um, the ironic thing, of course, is that they hate it when the federal government knows that to them. Uh, but they don't seem to have a problem doing it to us. Uh, so we just want to reiterate that, you know, home rule is important. It's in the constitution. You should respect that. Um, you know, don't, don't take shots at that. We we have our own ability to govern. We were locally elected. We have local issues. We should be able to do that effectively. Uh, one of the other things that's coming up, we've seen a lot of is certification requirements. This is more of a kind of a policy issue within some of the organizations of the state. But, uh, there's, there's a lot of potential things that are being proposed right now that could be very detrimental to the city. Uh, KDHE's got some proposed rules changes that would, uh, change how water and wastewater certifications are done. Uh, how our system is classified, what we would need as far as our certification for operators. Uh, it'd be very, very difficult if if they made this. It would be especially difficult for smaller systems. We're honestly in pretty decent shape. But if it goes to where ours is now a class four system, then we have to have class four operators. And then, you know, when we have one, Morgan is a class four operator, but when she's on vacation, then we don't have anybody certified to run the plant. And so she really technically can't ever leave, which isn't very good for for her health. Uh, and well, most, and I I don't, we don't really appreciate that. So there's, there's some things in there that we definitely need to to try to head off or at least pump the brakes on and have a better conversation with. Uh, there's also some similar similar proposals, you know, Ben was telling me about these where the, uh, they're, they're considering making volunteer firefighters require required to have passed firefighter one, two, and EMT certification. Which to me is is pretty short sighted. I I think this comes from the the eastern half of the state where they have more professional departments. But the vast majority of Kansans and in the United States, over ninety percent, uh, are served by volunteer fire departments. Now, we have a requirement for firefighter one. Uh, firefighter two is a lot more intense and EMT certification, we don't have but two people who meet all three of those requirements. So all the great things that we talked about today with the fire department, uh, we would be down to two people who would be able to actually serve. Which doesn't make any sense. Uh, I don't know if that'll go anywhere. Uh, we just want to make sure that that doesn't go anywhere, because that is a fairly ridiculous.
Do they not check this stuff out before they come up with these ideas?
No, Barney, sometimes they don't, you know, it's it legislators are kind of, well, God bless them. They're they're public servants, just like everybody else. Um, but sometimes they they see what's in front of them. Uh, and it may be the right policy in Johnson County where you have, you know, a dozen professional fire departments. But it doesn't really make sense here or in Western Kansas.
I read that and I thought that was really idiotic.
Yeah, well, you'd be surprised what comes up in the legislature.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't be surprised.
No, maybe you wouldn't. Yeah, I mean, some of it's kind of sketchy. But, um, this is, this is why we're, we're trying to help cut some of that stuff off, just being reasonable. Uh, you know, we believe in reasonable requirements, but dag gum, that's not, I mean, that's Um, investment in water quality, and then we've had this conversation multiple times. Um, they've done a great job in 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 passing the new water plan and and funding that. However, there's still some things that they need to work on. There's still nobody in charge of water quality in state reservoirs. Uh, they're more than happy to sell you water, but they won't tell you anything about how how good it is. And we've been fortunate enough to get, uh, that forgivable loan for one point one million to help treat that. But, uh, if there was some regulatory backbone to help maybe prevent some of these things, we'd be in much better shape. So, uh, we'd like to to continue seeing more investment in that, I think. Uh, energy deregulation, there's a couple of efforts out there to deregulate the energy market. This kind of comes up every year, I think, but it's a bad idea. Um, it just relates to to customers receiving worse service, uh, lower reliability, experiencing higher prices at the end. Um, investor-owned utilities try to get in there and and they eventually force out, you know, municipals or even rural co-ops. And, uh, it can have some pretty dramatic consequences. Texas in winter storm areas is a great example of a deregulated market that goes astray. Um, we don't want that in Kansas. And so, you know, any, any kind of effort right there, I think is something we need to fight for. Um, mental health investment, we do have a ton of calls, uh, for service that involve complications with mental health issues. And the state has done a lot in terms of investment in that, but, um, it really hasn't filtered out to rural areas at this point yet. So, uh, we do spend a lot of time with our police officers who are not trained mental health professionals. They are police officers. Um, they're, they have some de-escalation training, but they are not skilled in this area. Uh, and it becomes a situation sometimes where we have to go out and for the safety of the people at the the hospital, we have to sit with uh, people in mental health crisis, uh, in order to prevent them from injuring themselves or the people out at the hospital. Um, so we're just asking, I, you know, I would advocate for more funding, uh, for mental health professionals in communities, more options. Dealing with mental health crisis, um, there's not enough beds in the state that are, there's enough beds maybe, but they're not funded well enough to have people to staff those beds. Um, so it becomes a real issue for us. So those are kind of the things that we've identified, uh, in talking with our our people internally. Now, there are lots of other things that we could put on this list and if y'all want to have have more more things on there, you want to take some things off there. Uh, just, we're here to have that conversation. Uh, I think the real important thing here is that we don't really get down into into some of the weeds. Uh, I was talking with Nathan Everline about a community, uh, not in Kansas. But they had issued a statement about supporting Israel. And, you know, that that doesn't really there's, there's no, there's no reason for the city of Hillsborough to have a position on Israel. Um, we may all have individual positions on that. It it doesn't really matter. It's not going to affect us. Um, so spending time talking about those things doesn't really, doesn't really change anything for us. Uh, just need to keep it kind of focused on what's in front of us. Um, and you know, this, this helps us streamline our message when we go to the Capitol and talk to Stephen Owens or or Rick Wilborn or Senator Fag about, you know, what are our priorities and what can you help us with, or what can we help you with? So, um, just putting it out there, this is a discussion item. So if there are things in there that you want to change, you don't think we should have, something to add. This is kind of where we start.
Comments, questions?
I thought it was a great list, Matt.
Yeah.
Mental health thing is a good idea because I've had to deal with people, had to babysit. Usually called the ambulance and strapped them in to Prairie View.
Right.
That's about the only thing you could do. Then you had to go to the county attorney, get a form signed that he would put them in there.
Right.
That that's a little bit.
Well, that process is even changed too, where you can't, you can't do Prairie View anymore. It has to go to
Was that right?
Yeah, they don't take, uh, crisis inpatient.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, so we
Man, it's been a while since I've done.
Yeah, we've, we've been, we're part of a task force that, uh, Marion County here, Harvey County. I want to say Reno County is part of that too, uh, that deals with that. And they've been talking about that and, you know, Prairie View has changed what they can do. Uh, they're building a new mental health hospital in Wichita, or at least there's funding to do that. But we're being told that that's really just going to serve Cedric County. Uh, it's not big enough to to really take anybody else, so.
And and Osawatomie, right?
And if they don't have, they have had staffing issues where they can't operate at full capacity, so.
That's a, that's kind of a bad situation when you think about it.
Right, yeah. And it, you know, people are in crisis. They need, they need that help. They don't need us, you know, doing police work. Uh, that is not, that's not helpful. Um, so having more mental health
And that's who they always call.
Well, right, yeah, we end up being, you know, you know, last resort. We're the last resort. If they see an emergency and they think nine one one.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll, we'll show up, but.
Because it's a safety issue.
It is.
It's a physical safety issue at that point.
That's true. Then the people get really violent.
Over here, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they don't want a, a situ, Jesse and I talk about this a lot. We don't want a situation to mental health situation to escalate to the point where we have to use force on somebody. Uh, especially deadly force, because there, there have been people who have been armed, um, that we have had to
Yeah.
You know, taze most of the time and choose to taze them. But we would have been in a situation where we could have used deadly force and that
Well, back before, you know, we didn't have that. And there, there's been a couple of times that really came really close to using deadly force on people that wanted to commit suicide by cop.
Right.
That's a tricky situation to be in, let me tell you.
Yeah, for sure.
Sorry to interrupt, but
No, no, that's what this is for, is to get these comments out.
So, I know we talked about with, uh, you know, men and I, housing earlier today. Would housing be something that we could
Oh, yeah.
Potentially put in there.
For sure.
Something that people ask me about.
Yeah. More assistance for for rural housing, yeah. We can definitely, there's language in the league one for that, but we can definitely figure that out.
Other questions, comments? Okay, so you'll
Yep.
Come back next time with, uh, maybe an addition on the housing piece and at that point, we can decide to take action.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. All right.
Work.
Next item up is the, uh, twenty twenty-three budget amendment, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, just putting it back out there. We'll have our budget hearing on the nineteenth. Um, nothing, nothing's changed from last time. Uh, I just want to make sure you got an opportunity to look at it, another bite at that apple. If there's something that we want to talk about.
So, on the nineteenth, we have a, uh, we do have a home basketball game, the high school ba- home basketball game, but is there any other conflicts that the council's aware of? Just want to make sure we've set that date. We need to keep it, but, but hopefully everybody is good to go with that.
I have a potential conflict that I won't have confirmation on. But
Long live our bells here, we're good.
Yeah, it's just potential.
And and, you know, the, and and it's always, you're always welcome to zoom in if that, if that's an option for you. Okay. All right.
Yep, I'm good.
Barney?
Mark, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, we should be okay then. Um, any other comments regarding the budget, budget amendment? Any questions there? Hearing none, we'll move on to city administrators' report, Mr. Styles.
Sir, uh, good news. Fifth time's a charm, I guess, with our share application. Uh, you get approved for that. So we, uh, we got approved. Uh, yeah, that's great. It's great, uh, great opportunity. I talked with Darren this morning about that. Uh, the way K dot, when we filed their, or applied to this, we we set it up to where we could do this project next year in twenty twenty-four. Uh, assuming, and this is, we're not sure, we'll have it all designed and enabled bid it. Um, the contractor is going to be the hook, you know, if, if they can do it, uh, we got a window, you know, middle of May until middle-ish of August, uh, to kind of get this thing knocked out. There is a possibility, Darren and I talked about phasing it if we had to. We don't want to. Uh, it wouldn't work. See, it wouldn't be convenient at all. Um, but it, you know, it may be something we have to do depending on what the contractor comes back at. Uh, we'll have the bid letting. He he thought we could e- escalate that a little quicker than May, but it will depend on how fast K dot moves on issuing those agreements. But they were aware of the timeline. They were aware of the situation. And so they were actually prepared to to move a little quicker than they normally do, which is a little surprising. But, hey, I'm happy to, happy to do that. Uh, you know, as part of this project, we may want to look at financing for it. Our match is roughly two hundred thousand. We have that, um, in funds. But, uh, and Darren did say that they, the turnaround time on the reimbursement part of this, because it is a reimbursement, is about a day and a half now. They've moved to an electronic system. So really, there's no issue with the reimbursement. Sometimes like with KDHE, we've had to wait a month to get a reimbursement, but not the thing here. Uh, if you wanted to look at other projects, um, you know, we've got some other road projects, definitely worthy projects that we could group together and maybe have a bond or a temporary note that would be of sufficient size that we if if that's something you want to do, you want to just do it as standalone, we got the funds, we can do that. Um, but it would be an opportunity if that's something you wanted to look at. So something to put in, put in, put in your brain if that's something you want to do. Um, uh, Bartle House project, we've been talking with this. I'm not sure if everybody knows what the Bartle House project is. It's, uh, it started about thirty years ago. The Bartle, the Bartle Stone House, uh, was disassembled and given to the city of Hillsborough. Uh, with the intention that that be reassembled on the museum grounds and be open for, um, for tours and as a piece of history. Uh, we've got an architect that, you know, it sat sort of dormant for a long time. And then, uh, two years ago, we got a donation for seventy thousand dollars, uh, from an individual in the family who wanted to see the project move forward. And so they've kind of pushed that forward. Uh, we got to the point where we have architectural estimates. Uh, they gave us an original estimate of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Uh, we met with them, uh, Monday. And that that estimate is actually probably closer to three hundred thousand. Uh, and they've raised a little over a hundred and twenty, uh, and then there's another account which they have about a another thirty. So they've got about a hundred, they got roughly half of it. Um, and we've set a donation deadline at January fifteen, uh, for them to to make sure that all those funds are raised. Not sure if they can do it. They've been mostly raising it through the family. Um, and, you know, of course, it's taken thirty years to get to where we're half. So another month, you know, get another half in another month. I don't know how, I don't know if that will happen or not, but, um, you know, they're optimistic. Uh, so, you know, if if that that happens, then we'll, we'll plan on moving forward with the project. Uh, we'll manage it for them. Then what we've, we've told them we would do is, uh, we would return the donations that have been donated for that project. Um, or redirect them however they want to do that. As far as to the museum, we have one person who was interested in donating to the, uh, uh, Peggy's Group, Minnernite Heritage, uh, Minnernite History, MB Museum, uh, at Tabor. Yeah, Peggy's, uh, play. So there, there's some of that. It's really, the Bartle family story is really fascinating. If you want to know a lot more about it, um, it has a lot to do with missionary, uh, trips in China and breaking into the Chi- uh, the China area. And missionary, it's really fascinating. Uh, Kara does a much better job of me telling it. If you want to know more about it, we're than happy to put you in touch with Kara. I think they're going to do some news releases and some other things too. So hopefully, uh, I I don't know what the, you never know what the paper's going to do, but I think that they've sent some stuff to them too. So, uh, they may, may put that out there too. So, uh, if you're interested in donating to the Bartle House project, they're taking donations until middle of January and then we'll make a decision on that.
So I guess one thought I'd have is ways we can support is just maybe highlighting through our website.
Yeah.
Such.
Yeah, we've been kind of reposting stuff and when they've given us content, we push it out and
Okay. So we're showing support.
Yeah.
Where, where we, where we can.
We can, yeah. And we've been working with them for, like I say, thirty years, but last two years pretty intensely, so.
Yeah. So if if the funds were raised, where would this house be assembled?
Yeah, uh, it would be directly south of the visitor's center. Um, so it would go right in front of the community garden area. Um, it's a stone house, limestone house. Uh, it's two stories, so it'd be just kind of reconstructed and it'd effectively be a shell. Uh, they wouldn't really have, we don't really have the artifacts to to really deck it out as a full recreation. Uh, the thought was that we'd have, you know, minimal heating and air and then people could go in and kind of look at it and we would have static displays and tours in there. So, you know, it's not a huge house, but it is stone construction, so that's why the cost is is so high. So, yeah, it'll be right next to that and right in front of the community garden. Uh, planning commission, want to draw everybody's attention to the planning Uh, planning commission, want to draw everybody's attention to the planning commission meeting. Ben mentioned the, uh, container home overlay. Uh, we'll have that hearing there on the fourteenth, five thirty here on that. Uh, so we're talking about that. Uh, so if anyone's interested, we've sent notifications and then all that process, uh, but we'll have that public hearing. Uh, as of right now, I think the plans are complete. Um, I think what we, there's a few things that need to change there, so uh, they're in much better shape than they were originally. And so the planning commission probably have a pretty pretty robust discussion about what that looks like. Uh, you saw the, the visual of what that is. It's actually not, you know, it's pretty, pretty attractive. Pretty attractive design where they use three containers, uh, three bedroom, two bath. Uh, pretty, pretty decent. Price point on that was under two hundred, so that's not, it's not too bad. Um, we'll see, we'll see how it goes. And then we're also gonna be talking about the request about the hospital on the district, um, redistricting zoning. If anybody's interested in seeing the planning commission packet, it's out on our website on the main page. You can just click on that and download it. Uh, it's a huge file again too, so uh, it's got the whole set, the whole application, all the, all the drawings, everything in there. So you can take a look at that if you're interested. Uh, Christmas party, December twelfth, next Tuesday, six thirty Lutheran church. If you're gonna be there, we need an R S V P, so please do that.
I responded.
Yes, okay. Yeah, you're not gonna be there, okay. Uh, let everybody know, we're gonna be closing on noon on Friday, the twenty-second. Since Christmas is on Monday, we normally take a half day on Christmas Eve, so we're gonna do it on Friday. And then we're, be closed on Monday, the following week too, for the New Year's holiday and we'll turn right back around and have a council meeting on the second, so. Yeah, awesome. A couple of other things. Uh, let everybody know I got elected to the Kansas Association of City and County Managers Board. I helped them out with their, uh, strategic plan this summer and they awarded me by putting me on their board. Great, thanks guys, appreciate that. I'm happy to see. They're a good, they're an awesome group. City, city managers are fun to, fun to deal with. Fun group. Uh, and then I also had, we've got, uh, Mr. Colley's class. Uh, we've got three presentations. We need to hear from them. Uh, we're trying to get it in by the end of the year. Um, the only date that kind of lined up, it would be a lunch meeting on the nineteenth, which would be that Tuesday, we're at school, last day of school, and it's the, uh, uh, the day of our actual meeting too. Now, uh, we can set that. We don't necessarily have to have a forum here to do that, and we're gonna take action, but we do need to post it if we're gonna have a meeting, so just wanted to know if that was something uh, that y'all wanted to, to set that for on, and be at noon basically, or eleven thirty, whatever their lunch.
Should have lunch brought in.
Eleven thirty-six or whatever their lunch, it's weird. Then we can hear those three presentations. If that was something you wanted to do now, or we can push them into January too, it's not bad.
I'm up for doing it.
I can do it. It'd be good to have it. Yeah, okay. And you get lunch too.
Depending on time, I probably could.
Red lobster? Okay, noted. It's not local, but we'll have to get a shift in. All right, well, if that's the case, then we'll, we'll, uh, we can put together a special meeting. Y'all have to sign for that and call that and, and post it all as a, a special meeting, so. That is everything I have today, sir.
Any questions? All right. We now come to our last opportunity for public comments. Any comments anybody care to make? Okay, hearing none and seeing nobody online to make comments. We will close that section and go to council comments. Councilman Driggers?
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Lowen?
Just wanted to say that, uh, I want to encourage the planning commission, went there, talk about the hospital zoning. I encourage them to really do what they can to protect our hospital. I mean, we've been a lot, we've been through a lot to keep that place there. And, uh, remember going through all those things. And, uh, it's huge. I mean, it's a life or death issue for us, I think, for a lot of people. Will encourage us to, urge them to protect the hospital any, any way they can.
I appreciate those comments and I'm a hundred percent in support of, of everything you said.
I remember all the hearings and going to all the things and all the legal maneuvering we had to do to save it, so. We were pretty close.
Again, I think the, uh, I don't, I, I don't have one bit of problem saying that, uh, that God looked after us because two things happened at just the right time. I mean, at the eleventh hour.
Right.
You know, that, uh, that it just that's, that's my belief, for sure.
For sure. Not getting into the details.
Councilman McCarty? Councilman By?
Uh, the only thing I wanted to say is, uh, to our firefighters on Thursday last week, that was a very, very scary situation, but they have lost, uh, you know, um, they handle it professionally and, uh, very good care of us and I just, again, I want to thank Chief Steckety and our Hillsborough Fire Department for their excellent work, so.
Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing up, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.